More?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Please stand for a moment, a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have interviews to start today for the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Nisan Brown, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Well, my name's Nisan Brown. I'm the Marketing Director for Ameris Senior Living, the new senior community that's in town. So I have a broadcast journalism background and a minor in human relations. So with myself's and marketing background, I have successfully implemented strategies that attract diverse groups, ensuring that everyone feels welcome and valued. This experience has taught me the significance of personalized outreach and direct communication, which are essential in fostering an inclusive environment. I have a strong track record of working with various stakeholders to develop and execute comprehensive plans that address the unique needs of different communities. My ability to manage teams, analyze performance, and adapt strategies based on feedback has been instrumental in achieving goals. I'm confident that these skills will be beneficial in my role on the Inclusive Advisory Board. In addition to my professional experience, I'm deeply committed to promoting inclusivity and diversity in all aspects of life. I believe that every individual should have a voice and the opportunity to contribute to the betterment of our community, and I'm excited about the possibility of bringing my expertise and passion to the Inclusive Advisory Board.
Questions?
Thank you very much for applying. This is not the first time you've applied, so we really like to come back. One thing that we've talked about in the past, and this is not anything that, I don't take this as a suggestion, but they've talked about including like a senior advisory position on Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. So my question would be, you've got a ton of volunteer experience. Do you think that expanding our current advisory committee to have a spot or a seat dedicated to somebody representing the senior community would be beneficial overall?
Absolutely, and I just joined the senior community board, so it'd be a two-for-one.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you so much for applying.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with it.
Thank you. No doubt. Good to see you.
Aaron Cron?
Hello, thank you. My name's Dr. Aaron Cron. I am applying for a position on the Inclusivity Council. I am also a board member of Unity in the Community where I serve as treasurer. I've been in that organization about three years, working across the community to advocate. Professionally, I've worked in higher education and secondary education for 19 years, working with underrepresented communities in both a supervisory and a mentorship capacity to help bring our students and our young adults to opportunity. A lot of our, my former students have made Sioux City their home and are now working professionally in our community, so I think that's an important thing to bring, understanding what our young professionals are looking for and what our teenagers are looking for from our city so that they will consider Sioux City becoming home after they graduate. My background, like I said, is in education. I have a degree in leadership communication, two degrees in counseling, and one in education, leadership, and research. So it's kind of my passion to make sure I understand the dynamics and the context and how different systems work together, and then to be able to advocate accordingly to help advance our community. I'm a lifelong Sioux Cityian with a little bit of a stay in Omaha, but I'm passionate about making a difference here in our, in our community.
Questions?
We're fortunate to have you back. I happened to grow up with her.
Yeah.
We both got our start at Mayflower, and I think that that was a great, I mean, they still are. They're a great community partner, and they foster a good sense of volunteerism, so I was really excited to see you.
Thanks.
See you applying. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciate both applicants today making, making the application for inclusive.
Yeah.
It's, it's really a very important committee that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We'll go to the consent agenda today. Those are items three through 12H, or 12F, I'm sorry. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up as I read that item. If you want to speak on an agenda not on the, on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Always remember to state your name and address for the record, and always remember that we will limit the comments to three minutes today. I'll move that. Second? Three, the reading of the City Council September 9 minutes. Four is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Digestion and High Strength Waste Receiving Improvement Project. Tom here? Tom's here. Tom, I got a question, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you beforehand. I apologize. Is this part of the 300 million, or is this another 20 million that we're going to vacate five years?
This is another 20 million, but we're not vacating this in five years. This project in particular was, we put it out to bid last September and recently reject the bids.
Right.
So it's, it's that project. We're shifting from ARPA funds that we moved over for emergency repairs, and we'll be taking an SRF loan for this project.
Okay, but it, these are, I mean, digestors should not have to be redone.
Nope, nope. This is a permanent, long-term fix. Yep, thank you.
Five, a resolution awarding a purchase order to Converge One for Extreme Network Switches and Accessories. Six is a resolution authorizing payment to CW suited for the Wilbur Ralphs Library Parapet Wall Project. I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest. Seven is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. A is a motion appointing Sandra Bass to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. B is a motion appointing Di Gray to the Library Board of Trustees. C is a motion appointing Tracy Stone King to the Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing West 19th Street for the West High Homecoming Parade. B is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Virginia Street for a haunted hootenanny event. I got that right.
There you go, Mayor.
All right. Nine is actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to Municipal Pipe Tool Company for the Utility Linings Project. B is a resolution approving a contract to Innovative Masonry Restoration for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Short Term Improvement Project. C is a resolution terminating the Consulting Services Agreement with Municipal Solutions for Recruitment Services for the Position of Public Works Director and Utility Superintendent. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of property in the Combined Central CBD Urban Renewal Area announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center and scheduling a hearing, property at 900 Larson Park Road. Matt, could I, Matt Salvatore, could I please ask you the background on this and how it got on the council agenda?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. So this land that the Interpretive Center sits on was once DOT right-of-way. That recently came back, that property came back to the city, so we are redoing the lease to be under the city's control, and the rent would be $10 per year. It's a 10-year lease.
10-year lease, okay. So that just finishes out the original term that the DOT had?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. B is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area announcing the intent to accept the proposal, Volatilis, and scheduling a hearing for the Tea Hanger at 2503 Discovery Boulevard, units numbers three, five, and seven. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license, and 12 are boards and commissions and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5-0. Fourteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the new Utilities Field Office Building Project. I'll move that. Second? Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Which item is that? Oh, was that 14?
Yeah.
We have 13. 13. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thirteen's recommendation, resolution approving the final plat of D and D properties, addition property in the 2100 block of Decatur Street. The petitioner is David Ludwig. I'll move that. Second? Passes 5-0. Fourteen's a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the new Utilities Field Office Building Project. I'll move that again. Second? Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Fifteen's a resolution approving a $60,000 contribution to the Suland Initiative. I'll move that. Second? Any discussion?
Um, I did just want to make a comment. I think that the Suland Initiative is an incredibly valuable partner. I think, at least I'll just speak for myself, and I don't know if we would all, I think we would all agree that they provide a valuable service as far as workforce recruitment, retention, as well as multiple dealings with the city when it comes to property and other things. So it is an incredibly valuable service, especially as we look to progress and continue and grow our community in, in multitude of ways. I would say that I think that it would be beneficial, at least from my peace of mind in the, in the light of transparency. I've never seen a budget nor know exactly what our $60,000 would be used towards, and so I wouldn't mind that in the future. I think that it's only fair to ask for perhaps an annual presentation similar to the CVB or Downtown Partners. They do it quarterly, and we ask them for a detailed budget. I just would like the same transparency for the Suland Initiative. I, of course, want them to continue doing their, their incredible work and partnering with us, but just think that that's important for us to be able to make an informed decision.
I think they'd be willing to do that, Alex. That's a good suggestion to have for the transparency and to see where the money's going.
Just annually?
Excellent comments.
And just an annual, yeah, presentation then. And I know the two of you serve or one of you serve on that board, and so it's, so I understand, it's, you know.
I'm a steering committee of the Suland Initiative, but I don't know if I have a budget at hand.
No, 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 no. I just mean, I think that, correct. I just think that that, that's important, and that's why we ask that of the other organizations as well.
Marty?
Hi. Yes, I can certainly talk to them about getting you some more information. I also know they're having their annual TSI luncheon coming up here, I think in October. They do provide some more information at that, but I can ask for more.
And I think, and I understand that, and I'm hoping to attend as well. I just think that, similar to, you know, a CVB, you know, when they come and ask for an allocation or Downtown Partners, those funds are even directly allotted to those organizations, and we still ask them for an update and a budget of where they're being utilized. I just think a more directed presentation of where our, as the largest contributor to this organization, I think it would make sense for us to keep updated and making sure our funds are being used at best extent. Excellent. Thank you.
Sixteen's a resolution approving this.
Hold on. We got a vote.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. You're always a step ahead of us. Passes 5-0. Sixteen's a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with McClure Engineering for the West Kings Highway Improvement Project. Someone else will have to move that. Second?
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Before you, is agreement with McClure Engineering to do the design of the repaving of West Kings Highway. We started this project so that we could start the assessment of this, to assess it back to the property owners, and property owners are questioning whether or not they should be assessed or not via the resolution of, from back in 94, where it says that all paved streets that the city would pave or would only assess 25 percent. Whereas, when I researched that Resolution 94, it was replacing Resolution number from 91, I won't get into the numbers, but from 91, where it was for specifically full-depth pavement streets, where this street, West Kings Highway, was not a full depth. It was a substandard street or a light pavement, if you will, what we've deemed light pavement. So.
And Gordon, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you getting everyone up to speed. I know that we've had multiple meetings about this, and especially in the public works team meeting. The question I have is, and I know this would be for the residents as well, I know you've had multiple meetings dating back years. Would you say that there is consensus at this point in time? I know we've talked about at least a majority, if not 75 percent of residents being on the same page as far as the paying for this, or, you know, wanting to go down a process one way or another. Do you feel there's consensus?
Well, technically, all they need is 51 percent to, for consensus, but I had asked for last year for 75 percent, just because I know how contentious it would be. But to this day, I still don't know if they have even 51 percent.
I, I think there's a lot of history here too, Gordon, and I, I was surprised actually to see in the discussion the two paragraphs that actually laid out the 25 percent of the value of their, of the property owner's lot for the assessment. That might be consistent with what state law might allow, but this has a lot of history to it, and this Resolution 94 U 1781 wasn't referenced at all in the discussion, and that's something that the property owners have been relying on. And there was also a letter that was sent to a lot of the property owners, or maybe one of the property owners, setting out how this 25 percent would be divided up. So they've been relying on that for at least since 20, I think it was a 2017 letter that they.
It's a 2017 by my predecessor, Glenn Ellis, yes.
But it was still a representation.
Correct.
Yeah. But it was still a representation that was made, that was relied upon, and so.
The letters that we've been sending out have not had that, that on there, though.
Well, we've, but we've had discussions, and, and I, and I think this resolution's still in effect. It hasn't been rescinded by council that I know of, and so this, there's some confusion here, and it's, and it's troubling, and, and we need more, I think, than just this, this meeting, this meeting agenda item today to discuss the 1994 resolution, because I think it's still in effect from what I can tell. And we need to have a discussion from all of us, all of the residents out there that are affected by this. If this, if this would pass, and I know we're talking about design, but that would also be calculated in the cost, I think, of the, of the total project. So it's really a total package-type deal. And what I would be concerned that from my point of view is, if it passes this discussion, and it's, and it's yours, I understand that, but it's a discussion that's before council and before the public, that this would somehow be approved or consented to by the property owners, and they, and they don't consent at all or approve any of this. From the past meetings they've had, they're relying on the 1994 resolution, and I think they've made that clear to, well, they've made that clear to me, and I think they've made that clear to others at, at City Hall. So I, I think we have a, a serious concern about, about going forward with this until that can get, until that can get straightened out. And I know some of the property owners are here to speak to this, but, but I want to make sure the discussion somehow is not incorporated into anything that the council would approve, if it's a 4-1 vote or a 3-2 vote. I just want to make sure, and they can speak for themselves, but from what I know and from what I've been through in meetings, they are not agreeing to this type of assessment. They're agreeing to an assessment, but it's based on 25 percent of the total cost.
Mm-hmm.
And that will, that will have an impact on our, on our budget, should the council decide, let's go with this. But if we do that, I do think we need to address this 1994 resolution in some respect, either rescind it or amend it or do something with it.
Yeah, to find that, yeah, clarification of what the intent, what the intent actually was, even if the language is different than 91, what was the actual intent, right? Is your point?
Well, I know I'm at an advanced age in things I did in 1994. A lot of people don't think I remember, but this is directly related to my own street. Substandard streets were to get a 25 percent credit. Full-depth streets were to get a 75 percent credit. If the resolution is not written that way, that's a mistake on the person that wrote, wrote the policy at that particular point in time. But we, I still have some of my neighbors in that neighborhood, and I can tell you, my neighbor across the street understands this, because he's the one that helped negotiate it for his neighbors. I didn't take the credit at that time, but he negotiated that, because we had an asphalt street that the city went in and tore up, and they gave him a 25 percent credit for that, so. I'm going to vote no, because the city, whether the neighbors agree or don't agree, this is a four or five million dollar project, from what I understand, and we don't have it in the CIP, so to spend this kind of money on engineering when we don't have it funded just doesn't make sense to me at this particular point in time. So you can, we can argue about what the percentage ought to be, but if you're, if you're talking that kind of money, we just don't have it.
Gordon, you can correct me. It's, I think the estimate's about 1.2 million.
With engineering.
With engineering.
I thought you said it was higher than that, Julie. Maybe I misunderstood you then. Okay. And Gordon, I don't know for sure, because I haven't talked to you about this, but I don't know how many assessments that we've had as outlined in your discussion over the years, because we would have had, the council would have had to approve those, those assessments, wouldn't they, Mayor?
Yeah, and you haven't done.
We haven't done, I don't think, any since 94.
Since I left.
It's been, yeah. Yeah. It's been a long time.
Well, unfortunately, it's a lot of times.
I couldn't find any information on it since.
You couldn't find any?
Well, I don't think you've done, you haven't done, you didn't do a sidewalk since I left, and you didn't do a street since I left.
No, but we did do a sewer one back in 16.
Green Avenue would be the last one that I'm aware of.
Right.
And that was a sewer.
Sewer assessment.
Kind of a sewer.
Yeah, but that was, okay. Sewer assessments are entirely different, but.
Correct.
Right.
But go ahead.
I understand. And if any of you would like to speak, I mean, I know some citizens are here. We've heard from citizens, but I don't know if anyone wanted to, or if anyone else has anything they'd like to say. I understand your point, Mayor. I do think it needs to be a part of the CIP, whether it's going forward in addition to the CIP process. We have to clarify, clarify language, have a discussion about what we think the actual intent is, and clarify, or what that position would be, because I don't want to have conflicting resolutions or our interpretation, and if it's not clear in that resolution, then you are going to have citizens responding to this or relying on this, and I don't think that's necessarily fair either. So I think that I would rather have that clarity and have it in the CIP and understand if it's going to be assessed, or if it's going to be, you know, a majority of the city's expense. We have to budget for that anyway, and so at this point in time, maybe going forward with the engineering isn't the wisest decision.
And I think, Mayor, and just a suggestion, instead of voting this up or down, if, if we could table it, or defer it, or pull it, and have it come back till we can have this discussion and see what's, you know, because it's clear to me, but it might not be clear to you. It's clear to me what we need to do here.
But, well, and I would think you could, you could honestly vote it up or down if you wanted to, but I suppose, to your point, you might want to have clarity on the resolution before, because then the neighbors are going to have to have consensus, right? I mean,
Yes.
To our, per our rule, you have to have 51 percent consensus, you know, or the 75, like Gordon was suggesting, but even just say we relied on the 51 percent. We, they better know what they're consenting to and have that clarity before they do it.
I don't believe that's been presented to us yet, has it been? The 51 percent?
No.
No matter what the percentage is, the assessment, we still have to have that.
Not that I know of, no.
They'll get it, right? You guys?
I'm not sure. If there's anyone to be heard.
You can come up to the podium now.
Yes.
Jim Palmer, 3826 Orchard Street. We're not really clear on why we need the 51 percent. It doesn't seem like any other street has to, has had to vote on whether or not to get their street repaved. It seems like the city makes a decision and acts on it. So I, I think we could, if, if, if that will help get the ball rolling, but.
And the reason for that is because this is, this will be assessed at some level, so we want 51 percent buy-in from those that would be assessed.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's the only reason.
I think we, I think we can get the, yeah, yeah. If we get clarity on the 94 resolution and march down that road.
Is that by an ordinance that we have, Bob?
I believe so, yeah.
The 51 percent, is that by ordinance?
Yes.
That we have in place?
What I've seen, yeah.
And the requirement in the past, I believe it may even be under the state code. I can look at that while you're discussing.
Okay.
The 75 percent I came up with last year, all on my own, just still, I know that, like I said, because I knew it would be contentious. I wanted to make sure we had that much buy-in.
But we are willing to accept the 51.
By all means, yes, we are.
And so to your point, Dan, maybe it is best to at least delete this item then, until we have clarity.
Yeah, Mayor, council, the issue before you is, do you want to follow the 1994 25 percent assessment or the state law assessment, which is 25 percent, up to 25 percent of value? If you decide to go with the 1994 25 percent, we don't have enough money budgeted in our CIP to fund that, so if, if that's the direction where you're going to want to go, I would probably reject this item, because we're going to have to put it in the CIP, and the earliest it would be funded then would be next July. And that's, you know, we've got $100 million of other items in the CIP too that would have to be considered as well.
Or at least have, everyone can have a memo regarding the different resolutions.
And Gordon, does this proposal have, have a expiry date?
Uh, no, not.
It's open.
Not that I recall, but we do have to honor, give them some kind of leeway on it.
Yeah.
We'll probably tell them, just, we'll just cancel it and read, get a new vote from them specifically again.
That's what I would do.
So delete, delete the item? Does that seem?
Yeah, we, we appreciate deliberation, and we look forward to more discussions.
I'd like to hear what the others might have to say too, but you're okay with the, if we just delete that item? Thank you.
So you want a, a memo outlining the two different resolutions, with the one resolution that superseded the old one, and then a ruling from myself or from legal?
I think you can solicit the council, you know, and obviously legal can weigh in. You can give your perspective, and anyone else can get.
I think it's important that we lay out both options. If the staff wants to provide a recommendation, but ultimately it's a policy decision of the council on how to assess this property.
Well, before you start, Dan, knowing that there might be people with streets that we did try to assess back in the old days, like up by miles in and that, might be interested in this, so you're not doing it for one group of people here.
Correct. No, I agree with that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. Dan Greenwell, 11 West Kings Highway, here in Sioux City. I did want to point out in Resolution 94 U 1781, that the city did indicate that it would be 25 percent of the cost of the project, not assessed valuation, but 25 percent of the cost of the construction for residential properties, and if it was commercial, it would be 50 percent. I think one of the things that council needs to be refreshed on is, on May 22nd of 2017, we received a letter from the city regarding repaving West Kings Highway at that time. So you talk about the 94 resolution. Fast forward to 2017, in May, on May 22nd, they indicated, I'll just read from this, and Mr. Moore had a, has a copy of this. West Kings Highway from Country Club Boulevard to the Dead End Street to the west has, has been identified as part of the Reconstruction Asphalt Streets CIP 719-017. As part of the proposed project, West Kings Highway would be reconstructed, and all abutting property owners would be assessed 25 percent of the cost related to the reconstruction of the street. 25 percent of the cost associated. So I think the intention of this letter in 17 is consistent with the 94 resolution, and we were relying on this most recent 74. and we were relying on this most recent seventeen le, seventeen letter is twenty-five percent of the cost of the reconstruction. That is from the city and residents of West Kings Highway have this letter and it's been forwarded to one of the council on that. I, I just want to point out that the people have suggested that, that residents own, in the past, people have suggested the residents own West Kings Highway Street. That in fact is false. There's no documentation whatsoever that we own that street or ever owned that street and it's just simply not true. It's similar to me claiming that I'm the reincarnation of the Queen of England. It's just not true.
That's not quite the same.
Yeah, well, it's not, but it's not true that we own the property and there's no evidence or no legal documents purporting that we do. So I would ask the city not go down that route anymore. And in this most recent letter, July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, I would just point out a flaw in Mr. Ferr's analysis of that street calculation of the cost. We're willing to follow at least this resident. I don't speak for the other residents. This resident is willing to follow the twenty-five percent assessment cost related to the cost of the repair on each side of the property, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I move to delete.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
We deleted this item. We deleted this item and will pursue the nineteen ninety-four resolution and the other.
Seventeen's a resolution, amending Resolution twenty twenty-four dice zero four two eight relating to the demolition of fifty-five thirteen Stone Ave, Avenue by authorizing a ninety-day delay in demolition. The property owner's Paul Hallwell. Daryl, what do you have? Why are we giving ninety days? What has happened out there?
Terrible Inspection Services Manager. The property owner has come in and provided the documentation of estimates of repairs and financial means and has provided a ten thousand dollar cashier's check for a bond and staff would recommend ninety days.
You. Can I move that?
I thought so.
Tell me I seconded it. I'm really in trouble.
I think I had a second.
I, I'll second. I didn't think you did either.
Passes five zero eighteen's an ordinance rezoning thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street. The petitioner's Dolph Ivner. The first consideration was approved on August fifth, twenty twenty-four. The second consideration approved on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. It's deferred from August nineteenth and September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Someone else will need to move that?
I'll move that.
I'll sec, I'll second it.
First up, that they turned in a, a cards would be Robyn Raskin. Please come up. We've got your name and address. Please remember that we will be limited to three minutes and also because of the amount of petition, petitions, it will take a four-member council vote to pass this. Go ahead.
As I speak, I will be citing specific, specific facts and figures from different preferences. I have a handout for each of the council members. Would you like that now? As previously mentioned, I own the property at forty eighteen Floyd Boulevard and I have owned that property for thirty years. I am not here on behalf of myself as a property owner. I'm here on behalf of the fact that I have spent the last thirty-one years in this location, dedicating myself to family health and wellness. And I would be remiss if I did not become, come before the council to discuss my concerns about the potential air quality that this rezoning of thirty-seven hundred Jefferson will have. The first handout that you have is from the EPA Air Pollution Emissions Factor website. It cites specifically that aggregate handling and storage piles will emit dust emissions at several points in the storage cycle, such as the material loading and unloading, the strong wind currents load out from the pile as well. This, the movement of trucks and loading equipment across the storage piles is also a substantial source of dust. The second thing that I'm gonna cite is from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Handbook for Community Use and Air Planning Quality. It will show that in Sioux City, we have a unique air-wind pattern. It is so unique, it's under Appendix C. It even terms our air, excuse me, our airflow as a Sioux City wind rose. We can all agree, it is always windy in Sioux City. This is not a matter of whether or not this is going to decrease our air quality. It's a matter of how much is it going to decrease the air quality in Leeds. I also have as a handout for you also from the DNR website, recommended site distances of source categories for the vicinity of sensitive populations. I would argue that our children are a sensitive population. You'll notice highlighted that their recommendations are a thousand feet from distribution centers and a thousand feet from things such as schools and playgrounds. I have used the Beacon Sioux City Woodbury County website to measure distances. There's a free measuring tool available on there to anyone who wishes to access it. You will see that the Leeds Park splash pad is five hundred and fifty feet from thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street, making it less than the recommended distance set forth by the DNR. Leeds Elementary Playground is one thousand fifty feet from thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street, making it just barely past the recommendation set by the DNR. I've personally contacted District Seven Head of the Environmental Protection Agency. His name is Andy Hawkins and I discussed my concerns with him. He could not comment specifically about this case because he didn't know details, but I will quote you his parting words to me. Good luck to you, Dr. Raskin. This is awfully close to your schools and your parks. I learned from speaking to Andy that these decisions.
I'm gonna need you to wrap it up, okay?
These decisions are made by local elected officials. That is you. Our children have no choice where their splash pad is located. They have no choice where their playground is located. You have the choice to decide whether or not you stand on the side of air quality for our kids, where they already play and where they gather, or if you're on the side of industrial expansion. I'm arguing to you that thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street is too close. It should not be zoned industrial now for Knife River. It should not be zoned industrial, period. On top of that, I will leave you.
I'm gonna ask you to sit down now. You've had way more time.
I just want to mention that I have petition signatures from the teachers of Leeds Elementary. I have three pages of them should you wish to review them.
Thank you. Barry Bulkey?
Barry Bulkey. I live at forty-one oh three Jefferson Street. I have some pictures for the city council. Sorry, it's a series of pictures.
Is it one copy?
It's just one copy. I'm sorry. I didn't, it was a little pricey printing that size. Um, I was here before you guys, the last time we were here. I just wanted to let you know, we're up to six hundred and forty-four signatures now, individual signatures from the Leeds community. The only reason why I don't have more is I don't have enough time to walk every street. That's only six streets in Leeds and Leeds is a pretty big place. I wanted to just point out, I did watch the episode of Wake Up with Jacob that was on KTIV. And I wanted to point out that I did get to see Mr. Waters and Mrs. Shaner Rock on there and that you guys were focusing on making Leeds, or Sioux City, I shouldn't just say Sioux City, a better place. That the water park was a focus. That was a pet project. That water park is within a quarter mile downwind of this industrial zone. The water park is going to have to deal with the dust and the pollution and also the traffic because what Knife River said is all that traffic is supposed to get diverted to seventy-five. That's right along where the water park is. That's a hundred and fifty trucks a day or more. I wanted to bring up the fact that you guys had spoke about, you wanted to increase small family housing. That was a, the priority. Leeds is small family housing. Once this goes through, that small family housing is gonna get a lot rougher for those of us that live there. That this is not an optimal place to live next to an industrial zone. My colleague at the Leeds Community Club, she cited that the schools are within that zone. There are two schools within a quarter mile of this area, the splash pad and the water park. For that, that, that's gonna impact them. You would not build, if, if I came before you guys proposing building a new school next to an industrial zone, you'd say, no, there's a better place. So I'm imploring that we do the opposite. We don't put a new industrial zone next to some schools. The pictures that I gave you guys that you're seeing are pictures of Headed Park, a property you, the city owns. The first set of pictures shows a gaping hole in the fence that's thirty foot wide between the park and Knife River right now. And I took two pictures, one at the beginning of the month and one just yesterday. That's been there the whole time. That's a park where kids play. And this gaping hole's there and we're being told that their safety is a priority, yet here we are. The remaining pictures are what they treat the property next to the city park. It's the pictures of where they store stuff, where they contain their junk and everything else. That's next to you, the city. I'm scared to know what it's gonna be like for us Leeds with just a neighborhood. I just wanted to say, I appreciate your guys' time. I know you're hearing a lot of voices, but I wanted you to know, those six hundred and forty-four people and more wanted me to come speak again because they're afraid that this is gonna hurt our community. So I'm just asking you to please vote against this. We would greatly appreciate it as a community.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Patty Culling. I reside at forty-five oh eight Arthur Street, which is in Leeds, five one one oh eight. I've been there forty years. We've lost a lot of different businesses. We all know that. We've lost grocery stores, libraries in the forty years that we've been there. My main concern, you guys, is the traffic with the school, the elementary school. How many buses are going through there? How many kids are walking? You know, hundreds and hundreds of cars, moms and dads dropping their kids off. I just think it would be such a congested mess if they were to be a block away from the school and that's what it basically is, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Winkle with Knife River. I just wanted to thank the city and the citizens and residents, you know, working through this process. Knife River is growing and with this project, I think we can help the city grow by providing quality materials at a reasonable cost. And we will continue to work with the city. If this re, rezoning doesn't happen, we want to find the right spot that works for everyone. So again, I'd just like to thank everyone and, yeah. No matter how this goes, we want to, like I said, keep working with the city to find the right option. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Chris? I just, I just want to add to that. Thank you for your cooperation through this process as well. It's been very difficult for a lot of people and, and you've just, you've done what you needed to do to, to show us what you wanted to do and I appreciated how you laid everything out for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Kathy Fickett. I live at forty-five thirty-two Arthur Street in Leeds. I'm a lifelong Leeds person. And I just want you to think before you vote about if your family lived in that house by the railroad tracks, near the concrete plant and had kids. We are a family community. We have many children in our community and we're trying to improve the area, not make it harder for people to be there. Just think about your families.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Just to show a hands, who's for the project? Who's opposed to it? Thank you. Just for clarification, the six hundred forty-four signatures, the reason why super majority on the council, four members need to vote in favor before it passes is that they turned in a petition that, that counted twenty percent or more of those that were within the legal notice limit that was sent out by the city. So that petition, based on that petition with the twenty percent or more, triggered the super majority vote that we need for the council to pass this item.
Well, I'll go ahead and say my piece. I at least wanted the opportunity to do that. I don't know if anyone else will, but I at least wanted to address the crowd that came here today, as well as Chris. First, I want to speak to the residents of Leeds, those that made the trip and those that came here twice or in weeks back to back. I want to first and foremost apologize that I was not here last week and therefore asked for a deferral of a vote. I really appreciate your patience and allowing me to do so. I asked the mayor to do so because I felt that it was important to have full representation. I was going to be out of the city and just wanted to make sure to at least be here. I assured all of you that reached out that I was reading all of your emails, answering them to the best of my ability. I admittedly, I'm still getting through some, but I've done my best to try to stay on top and answer and talk to everyone that I had the opportunity to. I also made a point of, I wanted to be at that public meeting where Chris was giving a presentation about the project. I thought that it was, it's in, for me, it's an exercise in democracy. It's what honestly our country, what our community should be about, is soliciting feedback, all, ultimately having a dialogue, a conversation about what we want our future to look like and what possibilities there are and where we can find compromise. And so I just wanted to thank all of you for coming here a second week in a row and giving me that ability to at least be here to vote and to address all of you. Yeah, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, I think for the most part, you know, I saw some things on social media that, you know, might not be whole truths or might be exaggerating a little bit, but I think at least the correspondence that I had via email and, and other things for the majority was really respectful. And I, I greatly appreciate that because I think in a lot of ways, this is a highly personal, highly emotional issue and I understand that and I respect that. And I care deeply about this community, just like all of you do as well. And so I really do appreciate you taking the time to be here, to voice those concerns and do so in a respectful manner. I just wanted to at least say that to all of you. Chris and Knife River, I guess as a whole, but today you get to be Knife River. I'll just say to Chris, I really appreciate your patience through this process. I think that, that ultimately you, you have worked with us through this conversation, even during uncomfortable times. You know, I'm developing a thicker skin as I serve on the city council. I don't know how thick your skin is, so being in that public meeting at, up there at the middle school had to be a little difficult, but I thought you did your best to be able to address those concerns that were being raised and have a conversation. And just your willingness to do that, I think, shows your dedication to your community as well because this community is your home. And so I really do appreciate your willingness to do that and allow for the deferral as well. I know that that was asking for patience on your part and so I thank you for that. Lastly, I will say that I really do appreciate your commitment to continue to expand Knife River. One of the things that I had mentioned in a lot of my emails responding to Leeds residents is I said, I, I have a lot of concerns about the future of Iowa. You know, we're not a state where our population is booming. We're not a community right now where our population is booming and, and in fact, there are a lot of large. And in fact, there are a lot of large employers that are laying off workers. And I get excited and I am hopeful with a lot of the things that we've been doing in the past few years and further back, that we've been investing in our community and really trying to make it better so that we can grow our community and make decisions where people want to move here and companies want to expand, they want to grow, they want to relocate here. I think that's what we should strive to do, and so I'm encouraged by Knife River and their commitment to do that, and I am proud that they want to do that right here in our community. I think that's something we all should be proud of. But I understand that sometimes that process can be a dirty job. It can be dusty, it can be noisy, it can be smelly, it can be all of those things. And I appreciate Knife River's willingness to look at mitigation efforts. In fact, him and I, Chris and Julie actually and I and a couple other representatives had a sit-down meeting where we talked about possible mitigation efforts. We said, what could we do to alleviate more noise? What could we do to alleviate more dust to address some of these concerns? And Chris, you are open to all of those, willing to address them, willing to plant trees, willing to pave the land, all of those things. But at the end of the day, I understand and I recognize that it may not be enough and it may not be the right location. And I understand that I don't know if I'd get out of here alive if I was supporting the project, and I'm at a disadvantage because they'll just, you know, disengage my wheelchair and then, Chris, you better be here. But ultimately, I do really appreciate both sides of this issue. And I just wanted the people of Leeds to know that I took it very seriously. I listened to each and every one of you. But ultimately, it comes down to what is our future vision for that area? And probably the greatest thing on my mind is something that a gentleman brought up earlier, which was, you know, we are looking at growing that area and specifically the water park. I'm very excited about that, and I want that to be wildly successful. And even if the wind doesn't blow that direction or anything, you know, take all those factors out, even the addition of traffic makes me a little nervous with the, you know, kids and families that are going to be there and different things on that roadway, even though I'm happy it's a DOT roadway if we're going to have semis traveling on it. But it is something that I take into consideration as well. And so I've tried weighing all those things. I would be in favor of the rezoning just for, to go through the exercise of seeing a site plan, but I understand that that's not the appetite at this time and probably not the right move, no matter that outcome. So that's ultimately where I landed, but I at least wanted to have an open discussion. I thought that I owed it at least to the people of Sioux City and surely the people of Leeds that would be here today to take time out of their day, because I know that it's not always easy to be here at those council meetings at this time. So thank you all so much for your time.
Anyone else?
I do, oh, sorry, go ahead.
My name is Enean Mattis, E-N-E-A-N, Mattis, M-A-T-T-E-S. I live at 3312 Dearborn Boulevard. I work at 4005 Floyd Boulevard. That is way too close to my office. I cannot have poor air quality for my life. And I'm here today to say, please do not rezone that area for any industrial anything. It can be rezoned for anything else, but not industrial. That is way too close to a lot of people and their health.
Time to vote. This is the last one, because, go ahead.
Taylor Dubsky, 2841 First Street, apartment number 11. There is this talk about dust, but what about the air? From traveling around the industrial area, the status of the air quality is, there's definite way to notice what's going on there. I feel we might need to have some sort of filter for passing through. Leeds is one of the nice communities and should stay that way. See here, Sioux City is known for its winds. I have a friend with a real bad respiratory system. How bad would this make her ability to breathe if it got passed? Like, she can barely breathe a lot of the times. I feel that's a reason behind it is industrial stuff.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Pass or fails, I'm sorry, five zero. Citizen Concerns, any citizen want to be heard? Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kyra Hess. My address is 3738 Glen Oaks Boulevard. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a lifelong resident of Sioux City, and being born and raised in this town has taught me valuable lessons and values that I carry with me today. As a child, I was raised by my grandparents, Roger and Bernie Hess, whom some of you may know or have worked with in the past, and that goes to everyone here. Their constant support of community-based initiatives and public service instilled a fire within me from a young age, which has only gotten, which has only grown as I've gained experience in the public service field. In elementary school, I was nominated to be a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission Young Ambassador Program, a program tailored to enact positive change within the community. I was active with the Mayor's Youth Commission during my entire school age educational career, serving on the Executive Council for a number of years, which helped streamline the Cone Park project and the evolution of the riverfront. Seeing these projects in effect today has made me realize that young people in our community have the ability to make change, and that's what I'm here to do today. I'm here to address several critical issues facing our city, specifically concerning the closing of the Warming Shelter. The need for a comprehensive approach to homelessness and ensuring the city's strategic goals reflect the needs of all residents, particularly our transient homeless population. I believe that addressing these issues directly aligns with Sioux City's mission to enhance the quality of life for all residents, as stated in the city's strategic plan. The closure of one of the only two designated homeless shelters in Sioux City, the Warming Shelter, presents an urgent challenge. With the gospel mission enforcing strict guidelines against drugs, alcohol, and religious involvement, it becomes unsuitable for many individuals grappling with substance abuse or those in marginalized groups. With the closure of the shelter, the city must either reopen the shelter or establish additional shelters, especially as winter approaches. Contrary to arguments regarding limited space, there are several properties in Sioux City that could be repurposed for emergency shelter use. If none of these properties are feasible, the city could consider developing vacant land for new shelters. In a past meeting, Mayor Bob Scott noted that the $50,000 requested by the Warming Shelter would only be a temporary solution and was the only member to vote no in a four to one vote to provide this funding. While this $50,000 did sustain the shelter for a short period of time, the bank has run dry, forcing the shelter to close. However, the absence of immediate action to provide shelter is now creating a critical situation, especially now that we're coming up on winter. As discussed in last week's council meeting, a GoFundMe has been set up to try and sustain the shelter for as long as possible. However, we as a community should not have to rely on a fundraising platform to provide resources for our residents, especially while millions of dollars of city funds are being allocated towards roundabouts, fast food chains, and the water park. Sioux City's strategic plan outlines a mission to improve the quality of life for all residents. However, the Warming Shelter's closure directly conflicts with this mission, particularly in regard to public health and safety. The city's mission to enhance the quality of life for all residents must extend beyond those who contribute tax revenue. The transient population, though, is often overlooked and is still part of our community. The plan to promote the overall well-being of residents includes promoting the safety of our homeless population. We must continue to support local agencies working to eliminate homelessness and provide resources to mitigate this issue. But preparations are currently being made for when the Warming Shelter does close. Your strategic plan calls for the removal of barriers to accessibility.
I am going to need you to wrap up.
Many of the homeless population in the Sioux City are from marginalized groups, including people of color, LGBTQ plus individuals, and those facing mental health challenges. The city must address systemic barriers that prevent these groups from accessing safe shelter and essential services. Sioux City has the opportunity to make a real lasting change in the lives of its residents by addressing homelessness, substance abuse, and the shelter crisis.
You need to finish up, ma'am.
I'm almost done. Closing the Warming Shelter without providing alternatives jeopardizes not only the well-being of homelessness, homeless individuals, but also the safety and public health of our community. Aligning with the city's strategic plan requires immediate action to create inclusive, accessible shelters and services. I urge the city council to take these matters seriously and prioritize the needs of our current population before expanding our focus to future growth. Thank you.
Jennifer Holz, I was here last week. I'm going to address you guys last week. I am currently homeless here in Sioux City. And they are correct. With the gospel mission being able, they will never be able to house any of the women that are out there on the streets right now. None of us. They are full now. We will not make it. What if we were, what if it was your kids? People say it's an addiction that put us out here, or alcohol. That is not the number one reason. Men's number one reason that they're on the streets is mental health. Women's is domestic violence. You want us to leave, but where are we going to go? Now we're forced right back with that violence. Or we're forced right back to that mental health that we can't. And that's where we're having issues. All I'm asking is somewhere for us to go. Because if it was your family, if it was yourself, we're not bad people.
We don't think you're bad people, ma'am, and we do take it seriously. This was thrust upon us just as short notice as it was on everyone else. So we are working behind the scenes to try to come up with a solution.
But if you took an hour, one day, one time to talk to one homeless person, ask them, what's your story? You're going to cry.
I have done that.
Yeah, it's hard. I think I've actually, no, I'd like to talk to you, but talk to somebody. But I appreciate you guys, really do. And as a city and as a town, I know that the community itself is going to pull together, and I know, I just know that we're going to be okay. And I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you for having the courage to come up and speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Janet Reynolds, or King, sorry, and I live at 1423 Virginia. I'm concerned about the homeless shelter being closed, and I'm pretty sure, you know, it was a shock to everybody that there is no funding to keep it open through after October 1st. But the concern is, is winter is coming. A lot of the buildings on Nebraska Street over the summer have become basic shelters for homeless people because the Warming Shelter was closed. We're not going to get rid of our homeless people by closing the shelter. They're people. They're humans, just like we are. And for the majority of Sioux City, we are one paycheck families. Or, you know, anybody loses their job or something traumatic happens in their family, they can become homeless. We do have people that are homeless, not by choice, but because of the economics that we are going through right now. And I just hope that you guys can help us find a way to keep the shelter open, to keep people safe through the winter. If we could find a temporary, and to keep it open through the winter and able to find funding to help keep it open, so that we're not finding people dead in buildings, we're not scooping people up out of, under the bridges, and people aren't going to pass. Kids cannot survive in below zero weather. I can't, you guys can't. So I'm just asking that you guys try to help us keep the shelter open and to keep people safe.
I'm Donna Hartnett. I'm, my address is 2203 Myrtle Street, and I am a staff member of the Warming Shelter. I'm really emotional. It came to a surprise as us as well, as the community. It was a shock that we are closing. And about five or six years ago, I used to be homeless in the streets, so I know how cold it gets. And I was able to get myself out of it, but not everybody is able to do that. It gets, my fear is, because I've gotten so close to my residents, that they're going to die. Every day, I get to face them, talk to them, and I've gotten to know a lot of them. You know, I have my favorites, you know, I'm not going to lie, I have my favorites. And I've gotten close to a lot of them, and I get to hear their stories, and they're scared. They're scared. You know, I have a home to go to every night now, you know, like, and they don't. So I don't know, I just wanted to come here and it's my first time at this kind of thing. So thank you for your time.
My name is Travis Van Paulsen, 2203 Myrtle Streets where I live. I'm also a staff at the Warming Shelter over these last two years. Thanks, Jen, for coming up and speaking. I also was homeless, just like Jen. That was me, six, seven years ago. When I got homeless, I had nowhere to go. I had absolutely nowhere to go. I called my mom, told her that I was losing my place, and she came and gave me a sleeping bag and a tent. And this is before I knew the Warming Shelter was open. So the first few months, I tried it. I tried to stay out in this cold, and it was just too much. And at some point, I learned about the Warming Shelter. I was a drug addict at the time. Gospel mission wouldn't take me, no one would take me, you know? And they opened their doors many, many years from me. At one point, I had to go to inpatient treatment because I'm a recovering addict, I have almost five years clean, and I had nowhere to go. A lot of the silver living houses in Sioux City, I didn't have enough clean time to go to, or my background was too extensive. So when I had nowhere to go, including the gospel mission, I went to the Warming Shelter. I got a job, I went, I worked for about eight weeks. I went to community action, I got myself an apartment, and I, and it's only because of the shelter. Like, if it wasn't for the shelter, I wouldn't be standing here today. I'd be dead on the streets like a lot of these, I feel like a lot of residents are going to be. Over these last two winter seasons, we've housed over 125 residents. We have 100 beds, but then we also have casa we use, so we don't turn anybody away. So what we're scared of, like, I can get another job, I'm clean and sober, we can get another jobs, you know what I mean? What we're worried about is our residents. Like, I did make a GoFundMe to try to keep us open. Now, if it comes to the fact that we don't stay open, all that money I've raised, I'm going to buy tents, I'm going to buy gloves, I'm going to buy hats. Like, these guys are going to need something for this winter season. We are running on all funding, and I know it's a big process for a lot of people to absorb, but all we ask is if, we're just trying to get the city involved to keep us open, because like, without your guys' help, it's going to be chaos during this winter. Like, we know how it is during the winter season with the homeless now that want to stay out here during the winter season with the crime rates, with the vandalism, with the starting the fires in these empty buildings. Like, it's going to double, triple if we close. So I just want to make everybody aware, like, just, if we don't keep this place open, it's going to be detrimental to our city.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Candace Schmidt. I'm actually from Norfolk, Nebraska. I'm the current chairwoman of the Ponca Tribe of Nebraska, as well as the chairperson for the Nebraska Intertribal Coalition Group. I just come to share concern. We also, we're just informed of the closing of the Warming Shelter, and I just wanted to thank you for coming up here and being brave and sharing your story. There's hundreds of thousands more stories out there, and I just come to you today to say we are a willing partner in coming up with a solution for, before winter. The Nebraska Intertribal Coalition is actually having the conversation that you guys are probably all having, so I brought my business card and I would love to talk to or give somebody my information so we could set up a time to hopefully come up with a solution before winter hits. So thank you all for your time and everything you do. I know you have hard decisions. I know how that goes as an elected official, and I am confident that we can come up with some solutions together. Thank you.
Give your card back, would you? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Donald Anson. I'm a resident of 1620 South Lemon Street. You know, and a couple of the people that I know behind me here. I happen to be in recovery with them, and I also know them personally, you know? And I know a lot of the stories of people that have been through homelessness, a lot of people that have lived out in cold. I've lived out in colds for plenty of times. Not in the city of Sioux City. I happen to be from, I'm naturally from here. But I was homeless and a drug addict out in Denver, Colorado for a long time, you know? And I know what it's like to live under a bridge. I know what it's like to have nothing, you know? And I know what it's like to have something, you know? And I know that warming shelter is what brought me around and helped me out a lot. You know, warming shelter and the kindness of the hearts of the people that run those places is what brings me to where I am today, to the success that I have today, to the love and the kindness that I have for the people that live on the streets, for our transients, and for our people that have mental health problems, you know? And I just lost a sister due to her mental health problems and her addictions to drugs, you know? And she was homeless at one time, you know? It's very hard to see this happening, because I see people that I know standing outside, standing outside with their mental illness and not having anywhere to go pretty soon if this place closes down. And I've known since they were children, you know? And their mental illness has taken them to places that they really don't wanna be, but they are there, you know? So I would be grateful and happy if this place, if we could come together as a community and figure out a solution to this problem. Because it is, if you're gonna, if anything happens, there's gonna be a lot of people with mental illness and that, that are gonna be roaming the streets at night, and it's gonna create a little bit more chaos than what Sioux City already experiences, you know? So I'm grateful that I was able to be here, and I'm grateful that you guys are looking into a possible solution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna go to council concerns, Matthew.
Well, a couple of things. So first, I know Chris has left, but I did just want to thank Knife River for their willingness to take feedback from residents of Leeds and incorporate that into a plan. I shared a lot of the same concerns. I am an art teacher for the Sioux City School District, and I am around clay all day long, inhaling silica. We don't have any special filtration or anything out there, and it's scary to think that Berry County is one of the two counties with the highest rates of asthma in all of Iowa. So it is something that we definitely need to take seriously, and it's, you know, it's not just your health, it's everybody's health around you. I was really happy to see the residents organized, and I was really happy, I'm on both sides here. I like how everybody came together, and I'm glad for the conversations that I had, because I never felt like anybody got heated or disrespectful, which is important to have. I'm also really glad that Knife River was willing to adjust to what they thought was a safer, better plan. Most of the initial concerns that we heard were with regards to an asphalt plant, and they dropped that, or with regard to crushing, and they dropped that. And it's good to have a corporate partner that's at least receptive to that feedback. I hope that we can find a better fit for them, because we really do need to do something about the monopoly that we have here in town. But thank you for everybody for coming out. I understand it got stretched out a couple more weeks than we anticipated, and I appreciate that you took time to come and let your voices be heard, because that was very important to all of us. Moving on from health to homelessness, the homeless crisis is very much so a public health concern. And I can assure you that just as many conversations as all of us up here have had with regards to Leeds and Knife River in this past week, we have had with regards to the warming shelter. And what you have is a council that's definitely committed to making sure that we are at the table, and we are bargaining and trying to come up with a solution that works for everybody, because it is our community, and we're responsible for the health of our community. So we wanna be attentive to that. I like to say that everybody is one bad day away from being homeless, and I truly know that that's the case. I've had several people that I've known that are homeless, and I've had people personally in my life that have been homeless for spans of time. And so I think it's something that we definitely need to prioritize, and I can assure you that we are. Moving on from that, after our meeting last Monday, the mayor and I both attended the Young Ambassador Ceremony. And as many people as were here last week, for those of you that were here last week, the Young Ambassadors program had about twice as many people. They were adding folding chairs in the aisles. That was incredibly refreshing to see so many young individuals with that civic mindset that were willing to, number one, to be nominated by members of the school district, by staff of the school district, but to want to be involved with the mayor's youth commission. It's refreshing as a teacher, it's rewarding for me to see all of those young people step up to the plate, so. And eventually, it'll be all of those young people sitting up here, so. That was a great way to start my week. This week, looking ahead, we do have the League of Cities in town, so we've got a couple days of events with them. And Saturday, we have Art in the Alley. So I'm calling all of my students to try and get people out. Enjoy the art, and that's everything.
Great. I don't have a whole lot to add. My counterparts have done a really good job of expressing, I think, how we all feel. With regard to Knife River, I appreciate everyone who, I think I got through my emails as well, there could be one or two that slipped through the crack, but this process that we've taken, that's exactly what that timeframe is for. When we vote yes to move ahead, it doesn't mean we're voting yes to pass it, it means let's continue the dialogue, let's continue doing our due diligence, which afforded the citizens' time to gather and to have your voices heard as well. So I do appreciate the time that was afforded to Knife River, to us as your representatives, and I think it turned out favorable to everyone, and we'll continue to work with Knife River. But it is a hard decision, you know, to weigh, because we do want the economic growth, we do want the tax base added, so other neighborhoods, as well as Leeds, don't get their taxes raised. And the more businesses and industry that we can get on the tax rolls, that helps us keep private people's taxes down. So I did wanna say that. And I know the question was asked quite a few times, especially when we were at the neighborhood meeting at middle school. Why here? Why are you choosing here? What's the reason? And I'm not sure if that reason was really clearly stated, but I think this is what we struggled with, was the reason is actually the proximity of the two rail companies. The Canadian Rail and the UP came together there, and that gave Knife River access to their own quarry in Sioux Falls. So they could bring their rock down here directly to themselves, rather than buying them from someone else. So it cuts out the middleman, they felt that they could produce the aggregate at a much lesser rate, and the city of Sioux City buys aggregate. And, you know, our projects are all done through that kind of process. So we were weighed, you know, that was tasked, we were tasked with weighing that, to not have just one party or one company selling that aggregate to, and you create some competition. But again, it was just, we have to weigh what's more important, and is there another place? Well, no, I don't think those rails come exactly together anywhere else, but we can look for another opportunity for them to expand their business someplace else. The warming shelter, again, I think we were all as surprised as everyone else. We knew they were struggling, which is why we gave them the $50,000 the end of July to help them kind of limp along a little bit. And I think what we're focused on right now is helping them find a short-term solution, which we all know that's money. So whoever's listening, we really do need donations, but the warming shelter is not owned by the city, it's a private entity that started it. And that doesn't mean that we're not willing to help, but we don't control it, and we never have. We've never controlled their budget, we've never had anything to say about how they spend their money, nothing. We've offered them support through our neighborhood services, we've actually moved it down to the street, so if there is someone from the shelter that needs assistance, they don't have to wander around through city hall trying to find our departments that will help. It's down on the street, easy for them to find. With that being said, if we do find funds and the community comes together, and we can keep them open through the winter, our goal is to find a long-term fix. You know, to have a continuum plan that says, we do have mentally health people, and I agree, there's a lot of people who have mental health issues that are homeless because of that, but what's their continuum? This person has an addiction problem, what's their continuum plan? We need to have more than just a dotted line to some services in town. We need to have a straight and direct line to the assistance that these folks need, so that we keep them off the street permanently. So it's gonna be funding, it's gonna be planning, it's gonna be working together as teams, and I think all of our support services in Sioux City have already come and said, you know, we're willing to help, it's just putting it all together in a cohesive plan. And we are very willing to do it. We don't wanna give the impression that we don't wanna help and that we haven't helped, but we haven't had that role. I just wanna say that. We've not been in that role. We don't own, operate, or run the warming shelter, but we are willing to help. So that's pretty much all I have. I know I said I didn't have much, but.
Alex?
No, I appreciate those words, Julie. I think, I feel a lot of the same thing. I, first and foremost, I would say, I missed one heck of a week to be gone and out of town. There was a lot going on, and I apologize. I will tell you that I was quite a ways away and still was finding time to call city staff and ask them about the warming shelter, and what we were going to do, and what we were going to be able to do, to be able to meet this need and fill this void. I was answering emails about that. I was, like I said, calling and trying to have a dialogue with city staff, because whether I'm here or I'm somewhere else, I can guarantee you I'm not sleeping well, because chances are I'm up late at night stressing about something city-related. And so that's where I find myself, and I appreciate all of the words that were shared, you know, from everyone about the homelessness issue and the closing of the warming shelter tonight. It means a great deal to me, whether it was sharing your story, your personal story, your ideas, your thinking and thoughts for holistic solutions, you know, and finding something a little more longer term, like Julie said, that's something I really wanna have a conversation surrounding, or even partnerships with organizations. Thank you so much for driving and being here tonight to at least voice and offer your support. Or Travis, I tell you what, Travis, and I forget your name, but I, what was it?
Donald?
Donna?
Donald over on the end?
Perfect.
Are you Donald?
I'm Donald.
There you go, yeah.
That's who he was thinking of.
Well, Donna and Travis, I've heard a lot about the two of you, I'm guessing, or at least Travis, you for sure, buddy, because Kathy is a good friend of mine, and so I promise I hear quite a bit about the warming shelter and you guys and what's going on. But one of the things that I was assured by our city staff, and specifically neighborhood services, is just the continued coordination that they have felt with the warming shelter staff, specifically Shayla and those individuals that are really trying to bridge that gap and make sure that we have plans in place, at least in the interim for now, because I ultimately think that this is a much larger issue and a much larger conversation, whether we're talking about mental health, whether we're talking about jobs programs and training, whether we're talking about rapid rehousing programs, such as what we have funding for, and we have programs for. Jill and her team were even talking about down payments on different apartment complexes or housing. You know, what can we do to try to make this effort easier, so that we're not opening the doors and bringing more and more people to our homeless, or to our warming shelter, or those types of situations, but making every effort we can to find a more permanent solution for those that are willing to walk through that door? And I think that you all are great examples of that and can help show us the way and a path forward for that. And so I'm open and hoping we can have those conversations. I think it's very unfortunate that it took all of us by surprise. I think it was shocking and somewhat disappointing, you know, when we're having a conversation about allocating $50,000 and finding that money, because we wanted to leverage that for a larger gift or a donation, a sustainable solution, and we were assured that that was there, and that's why we gave that $50,000, and we were excited to partner and do that. We've partnered with the warming shelter in the past, trying to work on grant funding and other avenues, but it just hasn't happened. And so I think that now is a time when we truly understand that we need to come together, we need to have a holistic plan, and the city should be at the table, but we're not the sole partner in that, and we need to recognize that as well as a community, is that we have been here to assist, and we have a great staff that is dedicated to these efforts as well, but we certainly can't do it alone. So I think that's, that all encompasses the conversation that I've been having about the warming shelter, but I do appreciate those coming to share their thoughts. Other than that, I do, I would say that it is another big week, the League of Cities Conference, I'm excited to have them in town to be able to showcase. It's been quite a while, mayor. I mean, you'd probably know, what, 10 years or something since the League of Cities Conference has been here, maybe longer? Yeah, probably longer, but I just, I'm excited for them to be in town and be able to see our community. I think that we do have a lot of great things happening, contrary to some of the harder conversations tonight. There are some good things happening in our community as well, and I'm excited for them to see us being able to work through them and walk through them and brainstorm possible solutions. I'm also excited, as Matthew said, the Alley Art Festival is one of my favorites. It's coming up this weekend, and so there are a multitude of things that are happening. I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and so there are a number of different things going on throughout our community to celebrate that as well. And so I would encourage everyone to attend those things. For the most part, a lot of them are free, which is also very exciting, but I love our murals in our downtown, and celebrates our unique creativity, but also just shines a spotlight on the talented people we have in this community. And so that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center will be having an open house this Wednesday, September 18th. I'd encourage all of you to attend the open house if you have time and see the new facility. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
I went to the guard unit yesterday, and I probably have this wrong, but the command master sergeant, which is the highest master sergeant, which I know nothing about the military other than that person's responsible to work with the officers to make sure that the troops are well taken care of. They switched the guards yesterday, and it's always an honor to get invited to those things, and I wanted to say thank you to the guard. I just wanna say one thing to the people in Leeds, even though many of you think I don't live in Leeds, I'd like to think that I at least live on the edge, that I wanna compliment you, because in this day and age, it's real easy to get emotional and really trash elected officials when they're trying to do the best job. And even though I voted no on this from the very beginning, this council, I saw how serious they took your comments, and also trying to make things right for Knife River. And you, through it all, maintained your patience and your decorum, and that doesn't happen much in this environment anymore. So thank you for the way you conducted yourself. We really appreciate that as a council.
I move adjourned. Second?
Shainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Botters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Think about it. Good to see you.